Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you so much to the candidates who came today. We really appreciate your time and your dedication to the city. I am Lori Steiger. I am the president and CEO of the Woodbury Area Chamber of Commerce, who is running this forum today. I am going to cover really quickly the guidelines for this forum. Keep in mind, it is a forum. It's not a debate. The Woodbury Area Chamber of Commerce provides a platform to allow candidates to share their positions and viewpoints. The chamber is a neutral party in these forums and does not endorse any candidate. The event is being filmed by the South Washington Telecommunications Commission, and a link to the recorded session will be on the chamber website. It will also be on social media and sent to all the candidates. Questions were generated by the Woodbury Chambers Government Affairs Committee, as well as submitted by members at large. There will not be a time allotted from questions from the attendees, but we do ask all of the candidates to stick around in case they have one-on-one conversations, questions for you. Candidates will have 90 seconds for an opening statement and a closing statement. And candidates will be provided all with the same questions, and we will alternate who answers the question first. You will all be given 90 seconds. You do not need to use the full time, but you will receive 90 seconds to respond. When you have 30 seconds remaining, I will raise my hand. That gives you 30 seconds left to respond or finish your sentence. And then at the 90-minute mark, or 90-second mark, I will stop you. Now, I'd like to introduce Gina Kazmersky. She is the owner of Image 360, and she's serving as the facilitator today. Gina also serves as the Chair of our Government Affairs Committee. Gina?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, everybody. What we're going to do today is we're going to just kind of switch the rotation, so everybody's going to have an opportunity to start first, second, third, fourth. As we start the questions, I'll read them off, and then I will tell you who's the first to answer and second, and then we'll just follow along that way. So with that, we're going to start with opening statements, and Murid Amini first.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the Woodbury Area Chamber of Commerce, the SWCTC, Lori and Gina, for hosting this forum. My name is Murid Amini, and my family has called Woodbury home for almost 20 years. Look, I've said this before, Woodbury is a great city, but we can be so much better. And I do appreciate the efforts of the current city council, but I believe it's time to fill those empty seats with world-class experience. Somebody who has worked with global businesses and helped much larger governments handle crises, somebody who can deal with the explosive growth we're expecting, but also deal with economic downturns. I believe we need a leader who can protect property values, but also protect the citizens, so our community feels safe and can thrive. But most importantly, I think we need a leader who can listen to the voices of residents. And I've been working diligently, talking to dozens of residents, answering emails and calls, talking about policy issues and problems that people are having. And I commit to continue doing that every day in my candidacy, as well as an elected official. And so today, I want to share my vision with you all on how we can work together to make the city of Woodbury truly the premier destination for families and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim will go next.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Timothy Bruington II, and I am a proud 11-year resident of Woodbury. My wife and I raised our three children here, purchased our first home here, and we plan on retiring here. Since I arrived in the city, I've been committed to serving this wonderful city. I am a local pastor, so I get to meet a lot of people and hear their concerns and what matters the most to them. I'm also one of the founding members of the Multicultural Advisory Committee for Public Safety, where we bring in diverse peoples from our community to share our experiences and information with public safety to strengthen that relationship. We are also a part of the interviewing process for new officers, which is always a privilege to see the caliber of officers that want to come and work in our city. For the past six years, I have served on the Parks and Natural Resources Commission, where I've supported our parks, trails, recreation activities. Also, I've been a part of the environmental stewardship plan, working on that. That's been a privilege. I've also had the privilege of having some input on the Miller Barn Reconstruction and the Angels of Hope Memorial right here at City Hall. So it's been a privilege to be a part of those activities. I am running for city council because I love this city, and I want to continue to serve this city who have served me so well. I believe we need compassionate, thoughtful leaders who are prepared to make decisions that are best for all of the residents here in Woodbury. Thank you.
Dave?
Hello, Woodbury. Thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for hosting this today. Thank you, Lori, for organizing, and thank you, Gina, for moderating. And certainly the businesses for attending today. My name is Dave Helsel. I've lived in Woodbury for over 13 years with my wife and two children, who attend the 833 public schools. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. I work for a Minnesota-based Fortune 100 company for the last 27 years. I currently serve on the Woodbury Planning Commission and formerly on the Woodbury Economic Development Council. I've served on District 833 task forces and my children's sports boosters. Today, I plan to illustrate for you how my city experiences are based on free-market principles and the importance of strategic planning. This foundation provides you a stable base of experiences for citizens, staff, and ultimately for the public policy that this body is responsible for. My spirit of service comes from deep values and the civic pride. I bring to you an elected option of passion, experience, and leadership that will provide Woodbury with the best choice to fill one of the council vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Thank you to the Woodbury Chamber, Gina, and South Washington County Cable, and our business community. I have lived and worked in and for Woodbury for over 30 years. Doesn't seem like it's been that long. My first involvement was with the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, serving as the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee and as president when we had 14 members. So I have seen the steady growth under the guidance of some amazing city leaders over the past 30-plus years. I have served the city at a grassroots level. I have remained active in volunteering with many organizations that are too many for me to enumerate here today. But it's with a joy that I can participate so easily and readily with the city. For me, it's about being involved in a city that I have chosen to make my home. I want to live here, stay here. I've retired here. And it just doesn't get any better than Woodbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you, Chamber. Thank you, Chamber, and the Cable Commission. I'm Kim Wilson. I've been a longtime resident of Woodbury. I graduated Woodbury High School in 1985. And in 1993, I moved back to raise my family. I have five children. And 25 years ago, I decided to stay home with the kids. And so when you stay home with the kids, you end up doing a lot of volunteering. Most parents find themselves doing some sort of volunteering. I've been coaches. I sat on boards and committees for the hockey club, gymnastics meet directors. I've had my hand in the Lions Garage Sale Directory sales. I'm an archery coach, active in the church. And election judge recently for the past few years, and currently I am a city council member. So I have chosen to run for reelection again because I love, I actually love sitting on council. And I love working with the businesses and the community, and I love remaining open so people can come and talk when they need, when they have a problem. So I do appreciate when constituents do reach out and let me know what's troubling them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and get started with the questions. This one, this time, we're going to start with Tim. And then we'll move to Dave, Donna, Kim, and Murid. So the question is, what do you think is or will be the most difficult part of being a city council member, and how will you handle it?
Thank you. I think probably the most difficult part of being a city council member is to make sure that you understand the issues, that you're doing the research, and you know the kind of the potential outcome of the decisions that you're going to be making. In order to do that, I think you have to be an active listener. You have to engage in the community and hear other perspectives. Also, I think one of the most difficult challenges that you face is when making the right decision is not the popular decision. You have to have vision, perspective, understanding for the long term, and sometimes you have to make an unpopular decision, even though you know that's what's best for the community. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Dave?
Thank you. The most difficult part of being a city council member, I've got a long list here. First, it's balance. It's having a steady hand. It's being very process-oriented, taking emotion out and sticking to the facts. You're a representative of all the people, not just people who think like me or think like Tim, all the people. Another difficult piece is staying in your lane. The city has a defined lane, and if it's a county issue, work with the county. You can't, you can't solve all the governments. A city is a complex puzzle. If you tinker with housing, that might affect employment. That's another challenging piece. Council is about putting an organization and staff in place and managing that staff, listening to that staff, ensuring the right organization in place. That's a very big, a very big consideration. And efficiency and cost of that organization, and ultimately, you're a representative of the city and the constituents, not yourself. So like myself in business, you have to separate yourself from the good of the city, and I understand that. And that is, with that aside, there is a little struggle.
Right. Donna?
A difficult part of being a city council member, and how will I handle it? Learning, learning, learning. What's been the history? What's going on now? What's the proposals for the future? The 2040 Comprehensive Plan that's being worked on right now. Listening, listening to all of the department heads and their needs and the constituents and the residents and what they might need and want, and then hoping that they have some sort of a proposed solution so that we can come to a compromise. Our resident concerns and how to address them and to who, prioritizing those concerns, and which staff members to reach out to. We have an amazing city staff who are very, very knowledgeable. They are the best of the best. And to know that we can reach out to them, I can reach out to them at any point in time if I have some difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. The most difficult part for me of being a city council member is getting information. I like information, and sometimes I may be asked too many questions and want to go too deep into the situation so I can have a full understanding and really make an informed decision. I like to reach out to the people who are affected by these decisions and get their perspectives. If there's a neighborhood project, I would love to sit down and talk to everyone in the neighborhood to see how they feel, what they want. Is this something that they asked for? Is it something that they don't want? I'm here to actually represent the people, and that's what I'm elected to do. And so in order to do that, I have to have interaction and conversation with the people. And so really, get involved and reach out to your city council. Thank you.
Thanks. And Murid?
Thank you. I think as a leader, one of the hardest things you'll have to do is to say no. Sometimes you'll have to say no to a department head because it's not in the best interest of the city. Sometimes you'll have to say no to 10% of your constituents because they want something, but the 90% want something else. And so while you want to be everything for everyone and you want to ensure that all citizens have their needs met, sometimes you have to navigate those difficult contradictions. And that, I think, is probably the hardest thing, especially for somebody who cares about really helping the city and helping residents, you know, thrive. There may be other reasons, too. We have limited resources. We don't have unlimited funds, time, and resources, so sometimes you have to prioritize. Ultimately, that means you have to say no to some things and yes to others. So I think navigating that, balancing and having the ability to say no, but here's how we're going to make this the best thing for as many people as possible, is, I think, a key challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Dave, and then move to Donna, and then Kim, Murid, and then Tim. What steps have you taken to prepare for a role on the city council, and why do those steps make you the best candidate for the role? Please be specific.
Thank you. Yeah, before I ran for council, I made sure that I had a city resume, and I think I have that. I've served for seven years on two council-appointed commissions, as referenced earlier, planning and economic development. And both of those have a direct effect on the Woodbury business community. I've built strong relationships with council and city staff on the strategic issues that the city faces. One specific example is I've watched the northeast corridor go from a thought on a piece of paper in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan to the close-to-full build-out where it's at today over those seven years, and that's been exciting. On another government side, I've worked with the school district and worked through some redistricting of students and some bonding. And I also follow the council very closely at council workshops and have the bachelor's and master's degree. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Donna?
Thanks, Gina. Prior to my decision to run for city council, I was one of those nerds who watched every council meeting and read all of the workshop materials just so I could stay in tune with my city. So attending all the meetings in person or online, getting the mailings, the emails. I have already have developed relationships with many of the department heads through all of the organizations that I'm involved with, as well as with the council and all of the staff. So some of my preparations are underway or have already been established and developed. That's what makes me the best candidate for this role, is that I have already known and understand how the departments work and where, who to go to for whatever. So my relationships are solid.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Since 2015, I started attending council workshops and meetings. So when I was elected in 2020, I was ready to go. I had an understanding of how the council and the city worked. So I do feel that I was prepared, ready to go, and I'd like to continue on that work for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Murid?
Thank you. So I've reviewed the budget materials, attended meetings, attended the annual planning. I attend online city council meetings. However, it's not an exam you can really cram for. It's a really, you know, lifelong amount of experience and skill set that you bring to the role. You either have it or you don't. I would say that I definitely have the skill set and experience to serve on a council. I have managed and had independent accountability for much, much larger budgets, for greater, you know, levels of accountability during crises, and have worked with national governments. So I think from an experience and skill set perspective, I'm there. Where I can definitely improve on is to build rapport with the mayor and the existing council, just to kind of get ahead of that, build a good working relationship. Because it's a long commitment, and we're not always going to agree, so it's good to kind of build that relationship ahead of time.
Thank you. And Tim?
Yes, thank you. First, I participated in the Citizen Academy. I think it's called something different now. But we learned the different areas of the city and how the city works. We learned the non-for-profit organizations in the city, and we learned who our elected officials were, so that gave me a good sense of how Woodbury works. Secondly, I've been serving on the Parks and Natural Resource Commission for the past six years, and that's given me an opportunity to learn how things get done in the city and the process of engaging with the community, understanding the issues. And I've had the privilege to work with the staff here in the city. And I used to work for the city of Jersey City, and I can tell you, the staff here in the city of Woodbury is amongst the best I've ever worked with. Finally, I have built strong relationships within the city. I think building relationships helps us to get to a place of understanding, and we can get things done when we have relationships of trust and respect. So that's prepared me for this next role. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Donna, and then move to Kim, Murid, Tim, and Dave. What do you think are the issues that the city faces in attracting and retaining businesses in Woodbury, and how would you address? And how would you address those issues?
I think first is transportation. To be able, to have our entire population be able to access all of our businesses. Safe and reliable transportation does support our businesses. We need to seek and support affordable commuter transportation available throughout Woodbury, not just the Gold Line, for shopping, healthcare, parks and rec, events, the library. So everybody has access to everything. I think that would help our business community. I suspect that taxes may be another issue. As I look very closely at my own property tax statement, I am amazed at the city is able to operate with the small piece of pie that I have that goes to the city for my taxes. I, it's just amazing to me because Minnesota does have a complicated tax system, very And for this, the median home in Woodbury would have a city tax of liability of $1,352 a year. And the portion of that, that I get for the services I receive, public safety, public works, is, is amazing to me. So I think those might help our businesses and we would be able to retain and attract
Okay. Kim?
Thank you. Some of the issues that the city faces in attracting and retaining businesses are, I would, I would say would probably be cost. I think it is fairly expensive or more expensive than surrounding communities to lease business space here. But I also want to point out that we have a number of businesses in our community that choose to stay here and reinvest in their business here and make it bigger and better as they're relocating throughout the city and expanding their businesses. I do appreciate that because I, I do know that Woodbury offers a lot in terms of clients and business expansion and being able to grow your business. I agree with Donna also, transportation is an issue. Although we have the Gold Line coming in, I, I do not feel that that is helpful one bit. It would have been more helpful to have a bus system throughout the city and be able to get people to the northeast quadrant where they could access the warehouse jobs.
Okay. Thank you. Mira?
Yeah, so while Woodbury boasts a high quality of life, I don't believe that we've done a good enough job of investing in the things that are going to push businesses to come to Woodbury and to stay here. I think definitely one issue is we just make it too difficult to effectively open a business here, get it registered, get it actually physically placed somewhere. There's a lot of loopholes to jump through and, and we don't incentivize it either. Sometimes it's just a financial loophole. I think there are opportunities to incentivize companies to come here and have them stick around because our business values are down, business tax revenues are down. The other issue I definitely think is transportation. It's like impossible for me to get home if I'm anywhere west of 494. And that is drastically going to impact us when we get historical results for Q4 and Q3. And so it's about trying to identify what are the best ways we can actually route people to these businesses, advertise them, get people to the businesses and spending money. I think one other significant issue is that we aren't really doing anything to promote kind of temporary businesses. I think there's a lot of business tourism we can create by taking vacant spaces and opening that up to things like food trucks or, you know, festivals or fairs where small businesses can come, set up, do their sales, grow and thrive, but we also get the tax revenue from that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. First, I'll say one of the things I love about living in Woodbury is that I rarely have to leave this city for what I need. And that's because of the thriving business community that we have in Woodbury. And that's not by accident. There are decisions that are being made that encourage business to come to our city. And I think we're doing a great job at that. One thing I would a, address and look at is to make sure that there aren't any rules or regulations that make it difficult for businesses to do business here. And that the rules are clear and they don't change. We're, it's consistent. We know what we need to do to do business. I think we need to allow the business community to do their business with little input from city government as long as the, it's safe and providing our citizens with what they, they need. So I would look at ordinances to make sure that we are supporting the business here in our city.
Thank you. And Dave?
Thank you. I'm going to take this question a little bit differently. It's what, what are we doing right and what do we need to keep our eyes on to improve what we're doing right? First is to lower administration. A recent example is electronic signs. You can change them every two hours or so as opposed to once a day. And stay in our lane on, and not have patchworks across different cities. The city sits on the Chamber of Commerce. I think that's pretty unique. The mayor goes out and visits businesses. That's worked very well. We have a very strong community development department led by Janelle Smits and that's all about planning and strategic planning. What's the outcome? Businesses are coming. We've got Topgolf, we've got Amazon, we've got great schools. We have invested in the schools. The city and the schools work together across three districts. We've got very strong healthcare and we have our 50/50 housing stock that allows people to come here, stay here, live here through their entire life. And then at the end is, once all that planning is done, once that strategic planning is in place, once the, when they're in front of the planning commission, in front of the council, we've, we've pushed through that process and then at the end, we, we've got to support that and, and say yes where it makes sense. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Kim, move to Mira, Tim, Dave and Donna. Describe your perspective on the workload of a city councilperson and your ability to meet those demands.
I'm sorry, that was me first?
Kim?
Oh, sorry.
The council packets are fairly large and so you need to be prepared when you come to the meetings. But, but above and beyond the council packets and the meetings that you attend, your workshops and your different commissions that you represent and sit on, it's important to understand that not everybody has the ability, as some people work full-time, to be able to meet with the people during the day. I have that freedom, so I do make myself available with open hours. People can come and talk to me. I also make myself available with my direct cellphone number and direct email. And so everybody's workload is different depending on how much you put into it and, and what you can put into it really in terms of research and meeting with the public.
Thank you. Mira?
So my perspective on this has actually changed, you know, coming off of five, six years of consulting at 70, 80 hours a week. I wasn't concerned about handling the workload on the, on the council itself. However, what's been surprising is the number of folks that have reached out via email and phone just on the off-hours, on the weekends to say, hey, I have this problem. What's your perspective on it? Or what are your thoughts on this? How would you address property taxes or, or this policy? And so it's been a surprise, but also an interesting one, a welcome one, that so many people actually have a good relationship with the council here. In terms of my availability to handle that, like I said, I am used to working under, you know, a burning fire. And so I thrive in that environment, so bring it on. I'm happy to meet with as many folks and do everything that the council needs. And I also have pretty good flexibility in the evenings and weekends because I don't anticipate a lot of people go out during their workdays and start talking to the council. So have the flexibility and, and happy to meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. This is one of the questions I asked a lot of people when I was considering running for city council. My answer is first is understanding what the role of city council is. And that is to provide direction to staff and to make critical decisions for the city. And stay in your lane and not get too deep in things and allow staff to do what they do. This allows you to be engaged in the community. I think there are so many people in our community who do not know what's going on. And I think it's important that we work hard to communicate to our residents who are working, raising their kids, that decisions are being made that impact their lives. And so with my schedule, I'm able to make room for those community engagements that I think it's important. I, I would say that's one of your primary roles as a city council member too, is to engage in the community so that you can make decisions based upon what you're hearing in the community. So I will work towards that in. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dave?
Okay. First of all, in, in this city, it's a part-time role. So in some cities, it's a full-time role. I think Minneapolis, it's a full-time role. So it is a part-time role. I believe the processes, packets come out either on Thursdays or Fridays for the following week and they're also published to the public at that time. So you have four, five days to prepare. And it's, it's all about prioritization in my, in, in one's life. And the, the key then is to make sure that you prepare and as, as long as you're keeping up, it's not, it's not necessarily new all the time. It's business coming back, coming back, coming back. So it's, I, I don't see it as being an issue for me to be able to keep up with it. And with anything in life, if you know, if, if you get to know me, e, e, even though it couldn't be stressful, it's, it's always good to have some humor. Thank you.
All right. And Donna?
I am happily retired with a full schedule of community volunteer work, so you wouldn't know it, but the workload and my ability to meet those demands, many of them I'm already doing. Outreach to residents, attending every event here in Woodbury, just to listen to people and see what we have going on, to stay in the loop, attending those events, meetings, Also to recognize when to merge the lanes that we're in. I mean, we do a lot of, we have a lane, but we need to merge them sometimes with the county, state, sometimes federal. Our staff does that. But to know when to do that and to have those relationships already, which I have, again, already done in many cases, but will continue to do them for the betterment of the city of Woodbury. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mira and then move to Tim, Dave, Donna and Kim. What do you believe are the top three issues that residents want their local government to address and why? And why are you best suited to address those needs? And given our time, I'd like to increase the allowance up to two minutes for each, for each response for these. So again, starting with Mira, up to two minutes on this one. Thank you.
Sure. So what I've heard in the last few weeks from residents are property taxes, safety and infrastructure. Why am I best suited to address those needs? From a, looking at property taxes perspective, I'm a finance and spreadsheet junkie. I've spent a significant amount of time in my career working around, you know, complex calculations and scenario analysis and doing the technical things needed to try and identify how we can maximize tax revenue while, you know, trying to minimize the, the impact to citizens' property taxes. When it comes to safety, I am well researched in this area. I have a huge family history of law enforcement, both on the law enforcement side and on the oversight side. So it's not a new topic to me. I'm very familiar with issues in this area and it's something that, you know, I have talked to many residents about even before my candidacy, just with the neighbors app and watching kind of what safety trends are, you know, over the last few years in this city. And then from an infrastructure perspective, I've worked many years in infrastructure and utilities, both at the local and national level as well as in other countries. So I'm an expert project manager. I'm an expert in execution strategy. And so one of the values I hope to bring to the city is really careful oversight so that we have responsible use of city resources. We're not pushing projects out longer than they need to be pushed out. And we're trying to bring value into the city sooner rather than having to wait five years before we get the benefit of something. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. There are three issues that I've been hearing since I announced my candidacy. The first is people are concerned about public safety. The second is taxes and the third is the water here in the city. I, I think that these priorities and concerns, if we're going to address them, we have to address them by looking at the budget. I think the budget is the reflection of your priorities and your values. And so as we are addressing these issues, we have to look at where our money is being spent. I, I am good to address these issues because number one, I pay attention to detail. I'd like it to, to make sense. And if it doesn't make sense, I'm going to keep asking questions until it makes sense. I also bring a unique experience to, to the role to address those issues from my lived experience. I think that any organization that lacks a diversity has blind spots. There are areas that we will miss because we don't see those perspectives. So I would like to bring that to this role to address those issues.
Thank you. Dave?
Yes. Top three issues. First, water and PFAS. The good news is from a, from an asset perspective, a lot of that funding is coming from the state settlement. But on the other side, there's going to be how we have to staff it from an operations standpoint. So that, that'll be a good conversation. Second, public safety. Saw a good, good slide. We're looking to have one officer per 1,000 people. We're, we're struggling to keep staffing to that level. So that, that's, that's an issue because that, that's a tenant of, of strong business community. The creative funding on the lost tax, local option sales tax, I think is a good creative way to bring that money in. The 2050 comprehensive planning, it's, it's right around the corner and that's a long way out, but what, what city do we want to be when we grow up? That, that conversation needs to happen now and if we want to make changes, it's, it's now. And I'm, because I have two minutes, I'm going to throw one more in. Cannabis. That is a big change from a, a community perspective, a legalization perspective. The, the state has now allowed that and communities are now, the state is taking care of a lot of it, but there's certain areas that it's in the, the city's hands that, that need to be addressed. And I, I don't say that as a, as a negative thing. I say it as a positive thing. We can get ahead of this and I know the council is working very hard on that and needs to continue that through implementation. Thank you.
Donna?
The three top issues that the residents have talked to me about are housing for all. And it's not just affordable housing, it is just housing for all. And the city's role in planning for and supporting this large swath takes planning and dedication and they have provided that. I want to be a voice as a reminder of the complicated nature and delicate balance of housing affordability. Navigating this will be an important focus for me. Public safety, as many people here know, I have a long commitment and history with public safety. I truly believe that when the community has confidence in its public safety department, everybody wins. So times have changed, creating staffing and response needs to provide excellent and expected service as the residents have expressed to me. We hear the resident, we hear them, we hear the residents and we are working closely with public safety leadership to give them the tools that they need to meet their expectations. One example is the extensive planning and approach with implementation of the Safe Streets and Roads for All action plans. The final thing I'm hearing is transportation. I have had an opportunity to visit many of our senior homes where there is independent living and assisted living. And the one thing that they're asking for is how can I affordably get to Target? How can I affordably get to the store? So if we can work on a transportation, a commuter transport that's affordable to them without waiting for the other services that may- for the other services that may be available, would be huge since 20% of our population are seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Top three issues. I think we've all addressed the public safety issue. We know our police department is understaffed and not meeting the numbers that we want to have, but we also have a fire and EMS staffing that we need to bring up in order to ensure that our public, the residents here and the visitors, are able to get the proper response that they grow to expect from their tax dollars. And speaking of taxes, although our budget is growing, I feel like there are places we could be cutting in some of that budget area. I know this year, we just had the budget meeting. A few of the candidates were there, six and a half hours long. I'm feeling like we added a lot to it to beef up our public safety department and give them the opportunity to add staff, but we didn't really make enough cuts. And I feel like this is going to be a big year on the tax impact. And although I agree, we do have, it's amazing what the city can do with the taxes. I did go back and look at my taxes, and my taxes alone for the city portion, just the city portion, not the school district, have gone up over $300 in the past four years on my property alone. Now, whether that's because of inflation or market value, I don't know. We also need responsible growth. We need to make sure that we are not growing faster than our infrastructure can handle. And I agree with Donna on transportation, but the biggest thing I've been hearing as I've been out is traffic. Speeding, noise, and getting around is becoming impossible in this city. Thank you.
All right. The next question, we'll start with Tim, go to Dave, Donna, Kim, and then Murid. We'll again do two minutes per person on this one as well. The office of city council member is nonpartisan, and no party affiliation is indicated on the ballot. With growing partisanship at all levels of government, should local candidates continue to be independent of political party politics, or political party-oriented politics? And if so, how? Starting with Tim.
Thank you. I would like for our city council to remain nonpartisan. I think especially with all of the divide that's in our country now. Looking at city government, whose responsibility is to provide the necessary services to the residents that we depend on every day. And I think when partisanship gets involved, sometimes people don't pay attention to the candidate who is presenting issues that address our public safety and water and the things that matter to us most. And sometimes we are blinded by partisanship, so good decisions are not being made. At the end of the day, traffic affects all of us. Water affects all of us. When we have emergencies at our homes, that affects all of us regardless of our political affiliation. So I think to have healthy discussions in our community and focus on the issues. Now, we are being axed by residents, our political affiliation, and I am keeping it nonpartisan. How I vote on a national level is my business. I am here to serve all of the residents, not just those who are a part of a particular political party. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I'm running as nonpartisan as well. I'm getting the similar questions, and that's my same response, is we all want roads. You know, we all want those, we all want a park. So yes, I want them to remain nonpartisan. I think one really good measure that was taken over the last couple of years was putting in place a code of conduct with the council. I think there are some members who are getting a little partisan, and that is self-policing. It's not something you can take a member out, but I think it sets a really good message and a really good course forward. And one thing that I want to do to show the partisanship a little bit more, as a member, I will be pushing for an actual, not only a streaming, but also a full recording, no different than council meetings, of the workshops, because the conversations get a lot more in-depth there. And it's very interesting, members of the community, please go to a workshop. And in those workshops, there are some pretty concerning statements that are made that are pretty political, and I think it's good for the public to know about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Gina. I am in full support of the Woodbury City Council remaining nonpartisan. We are elected at large, we are not a ward system, and therefore, we represent the entire community. And I want to represent all of the residents of Woodbury, not a political party or specialty group, if you will. I too have had emails asking me what my political affiliation is, and I choose not to answer. I find that very personal, because I will, when elected, I will represent the entire city of Woodbury. Thank you.
Kim?
Thank you. We all agree, I think, that it should remain nonpartisan, and I have also stated that it should not go to wards. If you have a representative or a council member who represents your ward, and you are not getting the response you want, or any response at all in some cases, to only be able to go to that one council member is not an opportunity to be heard. So, but again, nonpartisan doesn't mean that we give up our beliefs and our values. We can still hold those, and we don't need to compromise on those. We can talk to citizens and be open-minded, but not compromise on values and beliefs. So the great thing about local government is it's nonpartisan. We talk about streets, and water, and bridges, and sewers, and parks, and lawn mowing, and, you know, open space, and transportation, and none of those things should be partisan, although I feel like everything has some value or some method of partisanship to it. I just want to say that we all have a party affiliation. Some may be independent or cross-voting, but for the record, I do not, I'm not beholden to my political party. I choose my political party. The party doesn't tell me what to do. I tell myself what to do, and I choose my party based on my values and beliefs.
Thank you. And Murid?
Thank you. As the other candidates have discussed, we're not dealing with partisan issues for the most part, and so why invite partisan politics into this? I think all it would do is make us beholden to the opinions of people who frankly don't live in the city and are not affected by the decisions that we make. And so for that reason, I am a strong advocate of remaining independent and at large. I think it's to the benefit of the entire city to have four city council members representing your needs instead of just one in your ward. With that being said, I think we've all faced a similar issue. My website has both red and blue colors on it, and so people are like, wait, can you tell me which way you're swinging? Because I see equal colors here. And I did that on purpose, just to kind of, you know, let people know that I'm here for, you know, representing everyone's needs. And at no point do I think that, as a representative of the people, my personal beliefs or leanings should impact the decisions that I make. What I rely on are my strengths, my experience, facts, data, but most importantly, the voice of as many Woodbury residents as I can get to. Thank you.
Thank you. That covers our question portion. We're going to move on to closing statements. In this particular case, I think, given our time, I'd like to move this to three minutes if people want to move up. Is that okay? Is that all right with everybody? If you have more that you want to say, you've got more time. So with that, we're going to start with Murid, move to Tim, Dave, Donna, and Kim.
Yeah, thank you again to the Woodbury Area Chamber of Commerce, to Lori and Gina for hosting, and the SWCTC. Look, I'm so proud to call Woodbury home, and I think that with the right leadership, we can just continue to grow and be better. I think the difference is that I bring in a lot of outside experience, varied experience from not just governments, but also business, and can help the city grow and thrive. I have the willingness, the energy, and the excitement to continue to serve the city for not just one term, but potentially more into the future in various roles. And so to me, this is the start of like a continued journey to help the city grow. And I wanted to ensure that we're growing the city in a way that's future-proof. Yes, we have limited infrastructure, but that's not how we should design the city. We should design the city in a way that accounts for future problems, future opportunities, future technologies. And so that's how I want to kind of drive my experience in this role. But most importantly, I'm really looking to represent the voice of the people of Woodbury. It's been such an honor to get emails from people asking me, you know, hey, how would you address this thing? And you feel that sense of responsibility for people's livelihoods. And I look very much forward to doing that on a daily basis on this council. And so I hope that I have everyone's support on the ballot. And if you'd like to find out more, get in touch with me, please visit votemurid.com. That's V-O-T-E-M-U-R-I-D dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. First, I too want to thank the chamber for hosting us, and for Gina, and for our cable commission who is hosting us this evening also. I'm not going to take three minutes, although I could. I just want to say that one of the primary reasons I'm running for city council, I've lived in many cities in the country, and Woodbury has been, I've been so blessed by living in this city. It is the city that I've had the privilege of raising my children. And I was raised that if you share the blessing, you must also carry the burden. So running for city council is my way of continuing to carry the burden of the city, to make sure that future generations that come to this city have the same positive experience that I have had in this city. It has been my privilege to serve on the Parks and Natural Resource Commission. I've learned so much by being a part of that. I found out recently that because I've been on their two terms, that I cannot get another term, so I'm like, oh, okay, a little disappointed about that. Partnering with our public safety department, from my experience, has just been so rewarding, and I've had contact with many public safety departments. I'm so proud of the command staff and the culture that we have in our public safety department here. I think that the city of Woodbury deserves compassionate, thoughtful leaders that are progressive and think long-term and are intentional about elevating voices that are often not heard at the city council level. I believe in building strong relationships. I'm an experienced unifier. I think that no one city council person can accomplish anything by themselves. We need council members that are collaborative and work with the whole and do what is best for the city, have relationships of trust, so that when we disagree or don't see eye to eye, we can work through those differences and always end with what is best for the residents of our city, not just the residents that are here, but the residents that will soon come and be a part of our city. So I ask this community for the privilege of serving on your city council. And I guess I was three minutes, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Thank you. See, that's the humor. Thank you, chamber, for organizing this event, Lori, Gina, and the businesses for watching. My campaign acronym is SWIM. My kids are swimmers, right? So safety, water implementation, infrastructure, and strategic management. As you make your choice, I think experience matters. Integrity and a steady hand matters in governing. I bring to you an election, elected option of passion, experience, and leadership that will provide Woodbury with the strategic direction in accordance with our 2040 comprehensive plan, soon to be the 2050 comprehensive plan. Important that we start now. I share with you the importance of the free market economy, the strategic planning. Planning is where it's at. Woodbury is really good at planning. Let's keep it going. My name is Dave Helsel. I bring to you experience and the existing relationship with council and staff. As a sitting member on the planning commission, my website is daveforwoodbury.com. Humbly ask for your vote. Voting is open. And unscripted, but some quick notes as I was here today. Could not be prouder to sit at this table with these strong candidates, people I've met for the first time, people I've worked with. Great choices for our electorate. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and vote for me. Thank you.
Donna?
That's a hard one to top. I have watched the growth in this city for many, many years, 30-plus, and I've been very active in a very different way in this community, more at a grassroots level, serving in a leadership role or a volunteer with the Woodbury Chamber, the Woodbury Community Foundation, the Lions Club, the Heritage Society, the Firefighters Alumni Association. I chaired the Yellow Ribbon Network for seven years. I'm on the Veterans Memorial Council, and I am the founder of the Woodbury Police K-9 Fund. My life's work involves participating and helping others. I've worked to be a voice for all people in my small way. I bring this involvement to continue to lend my voice to Woodbury and would be honored to serve as your next Woodbury City Council member. In the past, I have had three very diverse career paths, so I can bring this administrative experience that I've had and the leadership skills when elected to the council. If you want to know more about me, visit www.staffordfor, the number four, woodbury.com. And as Dave said, vote, and vote for Stafford.
Thank you, Donna. And Kim?
Thank you, Tina. Thanks to the chamber, the cable commission, the businesses, anybody who's watching, I really do appreciate that people take the time to make an informed decision, especially when you get down to this local level. It's a little bit more difficult to find information. So for the past four years, I have sat on council, and honestly, it has been a real honor and a privilege to be able to work with the other council members, with the city, but most importantly, to represent the residents that live in Woodbury. And we all brought something different to this table tonight. We all have different perspectives. We all have different ideas, and I think that's good. We've been able to listen, we've been able to gain an understanding of what somebody else thinks. We're able to grow, think of things differently than maybe we thought we knew everything, but I hadn't thought of that. I offer a diverse voice, a different perspective on issues that, I am also a longtime resident, you know, graduating from the high school in '85 and moving back in '93. So again, the city has grown. And it's good. Growth is good. It's going to happen. But I really want to continue representing the people of Woodbury, and so I want to make sure that people understand it's important to get out and vote. And yes, voting is open, but it's important to do your research, and please vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the candidates. This concludes our session today. I want to thank all of the candidates for being here and for your time and for your interest in our community. We have some nice choices to look at. We have some nice choices to look at when it comes time to vote. Thanks all.